Everyone, and welcome to the June 18th meeting of Portland City Council. Before the clerk calls the roll, I want to announce that there will be a council member who's planning to participate by telephone in this meeting, and therefore need to make these announcements pursuant to Portland City Code 3.02.025. Commissioner Saltzman is participating by telephone. He's out of town. Other council members are hereby informed of that. If any council members are physically present having -- have an objection to Commissioner Saltzman participating by telephone, please say so.
Preserving my objection.
Hearing no objections yet. Commissioner Saltzman, we're glad you're here with us telephonically, and would you call the rest of the roll, please?
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Good afternoon, and let's take -- do you want to take these together, Andrew, or should we do them one at a time?
Go through them in order.
Okay, so 645 first, because we have to conduct the hearing.
I'm sorry, conduct a proposed use hearing on state share revenue.
So, good afternoon. This is a hearing on the city's proposed use of state shared revenue. I'll turn it over to Andrew Scott, our budget director, to...
And actually, Mayor, you can go ahead and statement for the record. Do you have the...
I don't, so that's why I was trying to get it over to you. Because I don't think, unless I have it here, that I have the script. Thank you, then I'll use this. This hearing is being held by the City Council of Portland, Oregon in compliance with the provisions of State Revenue Sharing Regulations, ORS 221.770. Purpose of the hearing is to allow citizens to comment on the proposed use of these funds in conjunction with the annual budget process. As proposed for council adoption, the fiscal year 2015-16 budget anticipates receipts totaling $16,115,255 from state revenue sharing under ORS 221.770. As has been the case in prior years, it is proposed that this revenue be allocated in equal parts to support fire prevention and police patrol services. Is there anyone here today who wishes to be heard on this subject? Seeing none, then I will close the hearing on discussion of proposed use of state revenue sharing, and then move on to 646, right? We don't have to adopt that yet.
Yes, yes, and now we have the resolution.
All right, 646, resolution. Could you read that, please, Carla?
Certify that certain services are provided by the city to establish eligibility for state shared revenues.
So this is the resolution to verify that we are following state law and using state shared revenues in the prescribed manner.
Mayor, has trust in the pipeline become so fragile that we actually have to certify we provide services to the community?
We don't know if there have ever been any fasten loose playing with state shared revenues, but not here, and certainly not now. So, we're certifying that we're doing it right. So any further council discussion? Anyone want to speak on the resolution? Then a roll call to adopt resolution, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
I note that we are certifying that we provide street construction, maintenance, and lighting, and although that is true, I want to apologize to the fact that we don't provide nearly enough of it. Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay. Now, we're going to consider the ordinance which allows us to accept the state shared revenue. So I'll open the hearing on the ordinance. Is there anyone that wants to speak on that item?
Can I read the title first? I'll read the title.
Yeah, go ahead and, yeah, read the title.
Seeing none, oh, sorry, read the title.
647, approve accepting funds from the state of Oregon under the state revenue sharing program for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016.
Any further explanation, Andrew, needed?
No, no, this is the third and final action to receive our $16 million.
Take the money.
Yeah.
Anyone want to speak on that item? Seeing none, then we will take a roll call vote on the emergency ordinance to accept our state revenue sharing dollars.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
This ordinance makes the city eligible for an estimated $16,115,255 in cigarette and liquor taxes for '15-'16. I wish we had more, but aye.
Hales.
Soon to be accompanied by marijuana taxes. Aye. 648.
Approve a fund statement of purpose for each city fund and rename the spectator facilities operating fund to the spectator venues and visitor activities fund.
Hey.
So, this, yes, I will explain this, and thank you for those introductory items. It is always amusing, as Commissioner Fish mentioned, the lack of trust from the state. But now we have our $16 million, we'll move on to the rest of our $3.6 billion budget. What this item, actually, before we get to the adopted budget, this approves a fund statement of purpose. This is a technical ordinance, and it results from an audit from a couple of years ago. And as part of that audit, the auditor went back into the historical records and noted that for a number of city funds, we didn't have a statement of purpose on the books that had been formally adopted by council. They recommended that we come back and sort of clean up that history. So what this ordinance does is it notes for every city fund that we have, who the managing agency is, what the purpose of the fund is, the major sources of revenue, any contingency and reserve requirements that that fund may have, and finally, the disposition of the funds if it were closed. And so that's an important thing, as you know, say, when the campaign finance fund was closed, we have to, you know, dispose of those. So we do occasionally close funds as well, so we want to have that on the books. And with that, we also just want to note there is an amendment we'd like to bring forward. After filing this, we realized there were a few scrivener's errors throughout, and the city attorney's office recommended that we go ahead and file a substitute just to correct those. There was nothing substantive in the substitute, just catching a couple errors.
Second.
Any discussion about the amendment to item 648? Roll call to adopt the amendment?
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Amendment's adopted. Anything further on this item?
Unless you have a question.
Anyone want to speak on this item? If not, roll call on the emergency ordinance.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay, done. And now, 649.
Adopt the annual budget of the city and establish appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016.
So this is our final formal action on the budget that we've all put a lot of work into, and want to thank the council and the team, both in Andrew Scott's shop and in all of city bureaus and our own staffs in City Hall, for really a successful process, and really appreciate the good work all around. It's been a satisfying process, just being out in the community and talking with people about what we've done in this budget. You just get a lot of affirmation and smiles for how we're using the resources that we've been blessed with having more of this year, so it's been a good process. Anyone want to speak in this last window of opportunity on the council's deliberations on the ordinance?
So if I can, I'll just note, Mayor, two very quick changes in this adopted budget from the approved, from the general fund side, there is $100,000...
Andrew, I asked you not to mention this.
There's the $100,000 carryover for the PPS Concordia Early Childhood Learning Center, which you'll note in the over expenditure ordinance yesterday. We carried that over. What happens today in the adopted budgets, we actually appropriate it, so again, that $500,000 total, which will be going in '15-'16 to that project. Then there's a very small current appropriation level adjustment in the all hands raise. We trued that up to what the contract had noted for that as well. There are other technical adjustments in bureaus, and I'm happy to answer questions about anything that's in the change memo. The last thing I will note, the adopted budget does add 38.6 positions. Thirty-four of those are in the Bureau of Development Services. Again, those are the positions council approved in the spring bump, and now we are making sure that they're in the adopted budget, the final budget as well, so that they continue moving forward. The rest are some, just some small changes in other bureaus, mostly technical.
Okay.
May I have an amendment?
And then you have an amendment here? Yeah, please.
This is an amendment to the budget note regarding the Bureau of Development Services and the Portland Housing Bureau working together, proposing to delete the budget note that's titled Rental Inspection Surcharge. Just delete it its entirety and replace it with one that's titled Rental Inspection Fee. Council directs the Portland Housing Bureau and the Bureau of Development Services to work together to develop recommendations regarding the feasibility of a rental inspection fee to support the current enhanced rental inspections program, including an enhanced model of rental inspections and increased landlord and tenant education and outreach. The bureaus will present a recommendation to council for consideration by January 2016.
Commissioner, is the intent of this to capture the broader spirit of the Quality Rental Work Group of recommendations?
Yes, Commissioner, and it does have Commissioner Saltzman and his office's approval.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? So roll call on adopting this amendment?
Fish.
Thank you for bringing this forward. The Quality Rental Work Group recommendations have been collecting a little bit of moss, and it is time to act on them, so I appreciate you bringing this forward. Aye.
Saltzman.
[Inaudible]
Saltzman.
[Inaudible]
Fritz.
Thanks to Claire Adamczyk in my office and Shannon Callahan in Commissioner Saltzman's. Yes, I'm quite excited about looking, working with Development Services and the Housing Bureau to see if we can implement the results of the good work that Commissioner Fish and others did back in, during the recession. Aye.
Hales.
I've been hearing more and more strident concern from the East Precinct Police Bureau about the need for improved inspections in the number of derelict houses just in that part of the city, so this is timely and a good idea. Aye. Okay, any other discussion? Anyone want to speak? None? None present, then it's time to take a roll call on 649.
Fish.
Mayor, a couple weeks ago, we all had chances to give flowery speeches at the endgame of the budget, so I will simply refer to my early remarks and close today by, again, thanking my colleagues for collaborative process, thanking two departing bureau directors, David Schaff and Jim Hagerman, for their great service and work on the budget, thank the bureau advisory committees, which in my two bureaus will now be folded into a new Portland Utility Board, thank our friends at the table from the Budget Advisory Board, the citizens who've been with us throughout this process. I want to thank the folks in my office, particularly Sonia Schmansky, Jim Blackwood, Liam Frost, and everybody who's been working on the budget, and I want to especially thank the council budget office. This is a work in progress, this independent council budget office. I was here when the relationship between the budget office and the council sometimes had hints of adversarialness because of the structure and the way it was set up, and it has evolved to where I think the independent budget office is both independent of the council and a great partner in doing our work. And it is a pleasure to work with professionals, Andrew, that are under your charge and to work with you and your team, so thank you for your good work. Aye.
Saltzman.
[Inaudible] Billion-dollar-plus budget. Billion-dollar-plus budget. Billion-dollar-plus budget. Billion-dollar-plus budget. Billion-dollar-plus budget.
I just want to take a moment to... I just want to take a moment to spend taxpayers' money on. We taxpayers and ratepayers. We have water and environmental services fees that get spent on water and environmental services. We have property taxes and business taxes for the general fund, and the general fund overwhelmingly goes to police, fire, parks, and some for housing. I'm very proud that this council is allocating more general fund to transportation, adjusted for inflation, than any council since 1985, 30 years ago. And transportation, too, is a basic service. There's a perception in some circles, they don't think it's as widespread in Portland as it in the country, that government spends most of its money on other unimportant stuff. In the city of Portland, we spend money on important stuff. Aye.
Fritz.
Thanks, Mayor, for your leadership and for the city budget office for guiding us step by step, and for all of the hundreds, perhaps thousands, of people who participated in this process over the last six months, particularly all the staff in the bureaus who really do help us scrub every single line of every single budget. Thanks to Micah Batem and Paul Scarlett, my directors, and also to Dante James, the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and Amalia Alacarn de Mars, the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, who, somewhat similar to the city budget office, although not structurally so, do serve the whole city and mayor. I think having Dante James at the table during the budget discussions was a very good advancement in our process and something that I very much appreciated. Thanks to Tim Krail in my office, who puts in an enormous amount of work on the budget, and I'm very happy with the way that we have prioritized spending the additional resources that the taxpayers have given us. It's not a surplus, in fact, we still have huge holes in parks, in transportation, in housing, and in emergency management. And during the course of the recession, it was very urgent that we cut strategically in a way that it hurt the least. Similarly, now that we have additional resources, we need to be very careful to allocate them to the most urgent priorities, and I believe we've done that with our 50% policy on the one-time money, which means over 20 million is going to transportation, and I believe over 4 million to parks' urgent maintenance infrastructure needs. And then, I am very grateful to the mayor for the $2 million for youth activities for this summer. Already, we've had over 600 youth sign up for free access to Matt Dishman Community Center over the course of the summer, many of whom have not been able to access that facility before. So some cities would have added more police officers in the face of the gang resurgence that we've been seeing all over the country, or mayor chose to invest in our youth who choose to do the right thing. There's a lot more that needs to be done on that, but I also particularly appreciate the investments in the Office of Neighborhood Involvement for diverse civic leadership program, for neighborhood small grants, for the Youth Commission, and for connecting communities. So this budget really does look at who are the most vulnerable communities and how are we going to best serve them. I'm very appreciative that we've been able to be careful with the resources that the taxpayers have given us, and we will continue to be good stewards of taxpayers' money. Aye.
Hales.
Well, thank you all again. I want to make some special thanks to Gail Shibley, who's had the luxury, some might say, of having worked on three budgets here during her great service to the city. We have a lot of things to thank Gail for, but one of them is having helped this council get through the biggest ever, we think, drop in the general fund budget, and the biggest ever rise in the general fund budget, all in the space of three years. So Gail, thank you for this great public service, as well as the rest of the work that you've done here. And I think for all of us and in my office over the last few days, and I know with you, Amanda, it's just been wonderful to see some of the things that we've done in this budget already make a difference out there. I want to particularly commend the Parks Bureau for moving so quickly to put this initiative into action, actually, even before the beginning of the fiscal year to correspond to the end of the school year last Friday. So they really moved quickly to put the ideas on the table and then to put them into action. And Dishman Community Center is full of young people right now because of what this council's done. And over the next year, there's going to be a lot more of that real stuff that you talked about, Commissioner Novick. There's going to be a lot of miles of street that get resurfaced, a lot of parks that get improved, some neighborhoods that are going to be safer because the police bureau's going to have some resources and some information at their disposal to do a better job, and we're going to have a lot of our kids using up their time in positive activities in ways that I think will make our city not only safer but healthier in lots of ways for years to come. So, again, thanks all around for an excellent effort and a good budget. Aye. Now you have to pay for it. Item 650.
Approve levying taxes for the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016.
Andrew, anything to add to this item? Anyone want to speak on this item? Then, if there's no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
I always like it when there's another ordinance to vote on a similar subject, because then I can add things that I forgot to say in the first row. So the mayor and I did have a discussion on resolutions to Northwest funding, and so we're planning to bring back funding for that in the fall bump. It just inadvertently got missed out of this budget, but we certainly appreciate the restorative justice program that is, again, getting upstream of some of the challenges in our neighborhoods. And secondly, I do need to note that we have another big discussion coming up in parks, well, two big discussions coming up in parks. One regarding our seasonal and part-time workers and how they're compensated in relation to bargaining unit employees, and the other on the $15 an hour issue. And so both of those are part of our big challenges. We are levying the taxes in this ordinance for next year, and we've already allocated them all. We're going to, again, need to be very strategic next year in figuring out how to provide the resources that are necessary to be fair to all of our workers, and certainly, we're waiting to see what the legislature does in terms of the minimum wage. There is a lot more work still to do, and I'm excited to be on the council and continuing to do it. Aye.
Hales.
Yes, thank you for those points, and then I think, again, we'll be happy, I believe, when we get back to our financial management in the fall to see both that this generally stable and improving condition persists, but I think we'll also continue to be happy, Commissioner Fritz, that we adopted your financial policy change, that we make sure that when we do have improved resources, we do what we did in this budget and put a lot of them into basic services and into infrastructure, and that's a great policy, not just for one or two budgets, but for year after year, or quarter after quarter, when we get the chance to keep putting that investment back where it needs to be and places where it's been deferred, so thank you for that. Aye. And we have one more item, which we're five minutes ahead of time on, so we'll take a brief break, and again, thank you, Andrew, and your team, for great work. Look forward to a little bit of rest and a little bit of a break from the budget, and then more to come.
But as we do budget season, starting tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Day after tomorrow.
Thanks to your team, a really good job.
Thank you, good work. Good work, everybody. which we're five minutes ahead of time on, so we'll take a brief break. And again, thank you, Andrew and your team, for great work. Look forward to a little bit of rest and a little bit of a break from the budget and then more to come.
But doesn't do budget season start?
Tomorrow, yeah. Day after tomorrow.
Thanks to your team, a really good job.
Thank you, good work. Good work, everybody.